Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll please.
Trustee Spurling, here. Trustee Heinz. Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisack.
Here.
And trustee Bond.
Here.
At this time, we let public comments, two minutes opportunity to say what you have questions. We may not answer you at this time, but at least we'll listen to your problems or good things or whatever. We will be talking about the Christian Brothers and also the mailboxes later on, so I wish you'd wait until at that time you could talk, unless you want to talk now, if you'd like to talk now.
Please make an announcement about the gas and wash.
I will right now, before you start. If you are here for item 7B or 7C, which is the gas and wash revised site plan, it was on our paper, but it was not on the website, so we are not going to talk about it tonight. So if anybody's here for gashin', the gashin', the gas and go, you can, you can leave now because we're not going to discuss it. We'd like you to stay, but in case you aren't, that's it. So now we're back to mailboxes. Go ahead.
Well, thanks for opening this up. My name is Jason Buckley. I'm at 3022 Shetland Lane. On May 11th, our mailbox was struck by a snowplow, and as all of you hopefully have seen in the emails that I've sent you with the pictures, our mailbox was not only destroyed, but the post was destroyed as well, essentially split in half. And in the short term, right after that, it wasn't that big of an issue because we still had enough snow where we could just essentially mount our mailboxes on top of the snow piles. Unfortunately, once that went away, we got stuck with a three-foot post, a jagged post sticking out of the ground. And as I began to dig a little bit further, we obviously found quite a bit of concrete. And at that point, I realized this was not something that I was going to be able to just remove and reinstall. And given the fact that this was done through no fault of my own or, you know, my neighbors, we are asking that the village not only foot the bill for a new mailbox, but help with the installation as well. Given the extreme nature of that, I mean, if it was as simple as digging a hole, pouring a little concrete, that wouldn't be that big of a deal. But given the fact that we're going to have to remove this, and it's pretty substantial work that has to be done, if we could just pull it out and throw in a new one, it'd be all about it. But we're really looking for a little additional help from, from the village on this one.
Okay, Jason, thank you. We'll talk about it later, farther down. Maybe your wife can come down and talk when we have that time, so you get two opinions there. Any other public participation for anything? Okay. Go to consent agenda. Minutes of the village board meetings on March 12th. Executive session minutes of March 12th. Accounts payable through March 22nd, the amount of $398,122.98. Ordinance 1806, adopting the operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 219. Ordinance 1804, granting special use for motor vehicle services at 1460 Douglas, Vasquez Mufflers, and Supreme Motors used car, second reading. Ordinance 1803, granting special use for the same thing at 1470-80 Douglas Road, second reading. Resolution 218008, authorizing agreement between the Village of Montgomery and the Voluntary Action Center de Calbe for the provision of demand response transportation, the CAT. Now take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Okay. Next is item separate action. Motion to reconsider ordinance 1799, amending the Orchard Roads planned unit development to allow for a second motor vehicle services special use, Christian Brothers Automotive Services, 1937 US Route 30.
Do you want me to explain any of that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So this item is on the agenda. A motion to reconsider is part of Robert's Rules of Order. A motion to reconsider effectively undo, undo, a previous vote, okay? So it puts us back one step if it's successful. A motion to reconsider has to be made by somebody who voted in the affirmative on the original case. So I can't really remember who was, who were the votes, yet you were a vote yes. So for example, trustee Youngerman would have the ability to, to make the motion. Should he make the motion at this time, and there are two, we would take them one at a time, then there would be a vote. A vote of yes on the motion to reconsider says, yes, please undo what we did, bring us back where we were. In this particular case, because a public hearing has been had at the Plan Commission level, needs to go back to the Plan Commission level. So for example, if the vote is yes to reconsider, the next motion on the same item would be to send it back to the Plan Commission, but that'd be a second one. And then we go to item B and repeat the same procedure, assuming those are the votes.
Just to clarify?
Yes.
There was, there was, they were no votes on the original?
Correct.
So not people that voted in the affirmative?
You're correct. I'm saying it inartfully. The, the majority vote, people who voted with the majority.
Okay.
Are the ones who have the ability to reconsider. Thank you for the.
No, thank you.
Who could second? The motion would come from the majority. Does a second come from the majority as well?
It doesn't, it does not need to. It's just the motion has to be initiated by a person who was in the majority.
And it was?
Trustees Youngerman, Bond, and Spurling.
Okay.
For the majority.
I'm the one who did the motion to reconsider, so.
So you kept, you.
You didn't, you didn't do the motion yet.
Right.
Because it wasn't on the agenda last time.
I, okay, I was the trustee who said, yes, I would be willing to reconsider. Okay. So with that, I'll make the motion to reconsider.
Move a second?
Yes.
Anybody can make a second, correct? Okay. Motion made and second, want to take roll call?
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
No.
Trustee Spurling.
No.
Trustee Heinz.
No.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
It's a tonic, correct?
Yes, 3/3.
Tie fails. We will, we'll have to determine the impact of that as far as the applicant is concerned. I think we're going to have to look at that. We're going to have to do a little research to figure that out because there is a pending public hearing. They've effectively started the new process, but we have to see about the impact of this vote on that, so. I can, I can't advise you right now without doing more research.
Okay.
That effectively renders item B moot.
Right. This is as a negative, anything, okay? So we go to C, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right. C, waiver of bid and award of contract with Lane Western for water, water well number three, rehabilitation in the amount of $146,139.
Thank you. As discussed with the village board at the meeting on February 12th, village staff along with EEI have moved forward with the water well number three rehabilitation. The villages maintains a professional services agreement with Lane. And since well three uses a pump and seal model that is proprietary to Lane, we recommend that we waive competitive bid and request a proposal for rehabilitation directly from Lane. The proposal for the anticipated work came in at $146,139, which is below our engineer's estimate. I recommend we award the contract to Lane Christensen. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Any questions for Todd?
No. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
No.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
And trustee Bond.
Yes.
Okay, where did I lose my paper? Next one's award of contract to H. R. Linden and Sons for Riverside Water Main Improvements in the amount of $618,532. Todd?
Thank you again. Bids for the Riverside Water Main Improvement Project were received and opened at 11:00 a.m. on March 20th. Of the 13 contractors that pulled plans for the project, we received 11 bids. Bids ranged from $618,532 to $858,559. While the engineer's estimate for the project was $726,340, we recommend the village board award the contract to the low bidder, H. Linden and Sons of Plano, in the amount of $618,532, which is 14.8% under budget or under the engineer's estimate. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Director Habensed, what's the timeline on this project? When are we looking to start and about how long will it take?
The goal is to get started probably, likely at the end of April, if not early May, and wrap it up by the end of August, so that the road program can come in and rehabilitate those roads before the end of the paving season.
I'm glad to see at least 12 bids come in on that, which means they're, we did it real early, which is good. Any other questions for Todd?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Take the roll.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Next is the professional service agreement with Engineering Enterprises for construction engineering for the 218 gap implementation project in the amount of $53,491. Pete?
I'll take that one.
Okay.
Administrator, I'm sorry, administrator is awful. Could you pull up page 157 of the agenda? That might help illustrate the, no. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, never mind. I'll, I'll just walk you through it and try and bear with me. The 2018 gap implementation project will use IRP funds to construct new sidewalk and/or bike path to fill in the gaps in the villages system, as shown in the sidewalk and bike path gap installation plan memo approved by the board on March 12th. The project will include construction of new shared use path from Simpson Parkway to the Stewart Sports Complex, additionally installing new path, new pedestrian crossing at US 30 and Griffin Road, construction of new path consisting of paving the existing path, which is now limestone in front of the police department, and filling a gap there as well. Execution of the, the attached design and construction engineering agreement with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated will allow the work of plans and specifications to commence in order to bid this project for 2018 construction. Therefore, I'm recommending the approval of the attached PSA for design and construction engineering. The proposed fee, as you said, was $53,491. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
You do all, have that in our packet too, by the way, so. Any other questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
And trustee Lee.
Back to Todd. Replacement of 282 and 283 International five yard salt trucks with plow.
Thank you. If you'll bear with me, I think the most efficient way will be for me to walk through items F through J, all as kind of one justification for you, and then I'm happy to answer any individual questions you have once finished, and then you invite, you would go ahead and vote on those individual items one at a time. Does that make sense? As we've done in the past, I work closely with the appropriate department heads and fleet mechanic to evaluate vehicles and pieces of equipment in our fleet as they come up for scheduled replacement. Each year, we tend to make adjustments to the schedule where necessary. Adjustments include delaying replacement of units with low usage, low mileage, minimal service history. Conversely, at times, we find that a unit recommended moving forward based on higher mileage, condition, maintenance history, and so on. The first item, item F, is the recommendation to replace units 282 and 283. Both are currently International five yard plow and salt trucks, which were originally scheduled for replacement in the current fiscal year. However, we recommended delaying replacement of those two units until this year. Both trucks are showing signs of deterioration and growing maintenance history. As we've done in the past, I was able to get JX Peterbilt and Monroe truck equipment to build a demo truck using our specification. The truck was built earlier this year and is completed about a month ago. While the truck is currently being used as a demo, approval to purchase this unit will allow us to take possession after May 1 and utilize the more versatile design throughout the upcoming seasons. The purchase cost for the demo would be $167,777 after the $6,400 demo discount is applied. The other truck would be ordered upon approval using the National Joint Purchasing Alliance contract and would be subject to a six to nine month lead time. However, we're recommending that this truck be built on a Peterbilt chassis with a stake body, flatbed, a new plow assembly with controls, and the reuse of an existing V-Box spreader from one of the older trucks that would be refurbished before being employed on this flatbed during winter months. That design increases our versatility for equipment throughout the year and allows us to come in nearly $20,000 below budget. The cost for that truck would be $154,482.66. Item G is a recommendation to replace an existing aerial lift truck. The current truck is a 2007, which was purchased in 2013. The village bought it used. While this truck is not used daily, it remains a vital asset in our fleet for repairing streetlights, street signs, setup of special events, hanging of banners, trimming and removing of trees, and so on. The truck has over 67,000 miles on it, which equates to approximately 400,000 hours of runtime, since the truck must remain running to use the lift equipment. We've experienced some very costly breakdowns in this piece of equipment over the past year, so we're recommending that we replace it. The cabin chassis would be purchased under the Suburban Joint Purchasing Cooperative, while the National Joint Purchasing Alliance contract would be used to facilitate the UTM 41-foot aerial lift equipment and the reading service body. The truck would be coordinated through Monroe truck equipment at a total cost of $112,088. Item H is a recommendation to purchase an additional pickup truck for the Public Works Department. We currently do not have enough light duty vehicles to meet the demands of Public Works. This often causes us to shift scheduling of tasks until the appropriate vehicle can be used to complement the execution of the task. We budgeted $53,000 in the upcoming fiscal year to purchase this new vehicle, complete with a snowplow, toolboxes, key rack, emergency lighting decals, and a two-way radio. However, I'm pleased to report that working with Kaufman's Trucks here locally, they're able to provide some government discounted pricing to us. We came in well under budget at $48,185.59. This item would require the waiver of competitive bid, because we're purchasing here locally as the board has liked to do in the past versus using the state contract. Item I is the recommendation to purchase a John Deere Model 35G mini excavator through, again, that National Joint Purchasing Alliance contract we budgeted for this item to complement our current fleet of the John Deere 410L combination backhoe, which is used mostly on larger scale excavations, as well as the Vermeer hydro excavator, which is convenient for locating utilities, working in confined spaces, and reducing landscape damage impacts. The mini excavator allows the operator to crawl between homes into tight areas. He's able to swing completely around to minimize the mess and the restoration caused by excavation. Furthermore, in a pinch, the unit would allow us to assemble two separate excavation crews to begin excavations on things such as water main breaks, which we saw plenty of this past winter. This unit would cost $50,210.41. Finally, item J is a recommendation to replace four police department vehicles. Unit 461 is a Ford Taurus, commonly used by the administrative staff for training and attendance of the academy. Unit 814 is a Crown Victoria, used by the Investigations Department. This vehicle has had numerous breakdowns recently, while units 833 and 834 are patrol vehicles, which have reached the end of their intended life cycle. The four vehicles, I'm sorry, of the four vehicles, two of them will require complete upfitting. The Illinois Central Management Services contract pricing for the upcoming season isn't available yet, however, we anticipate it will be released later this week. We're asking for approval in an amount not to exceed $176,642, which is 5% higher than last year's costs. We believe we'll be able to purchase the new vehicles with the updated pricing for less than that amount. By approving these now, we're able to place the order in order immediately upon the release of the state bid pricing. This will help us significantly to reduce the delays often experienced as numerous agencies begin to place orders all at the same time. If there's any questions for any of these items, I'm happy to entertain those now.
I have one question.
Yes.
The replacement vehicles for the police fleet. When I look through this, it's marked off as sedan, so are we replacing all four vehicles with sedans?
That is the plan, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, all four vehicles would be replaced with the Ford Taurus Police Interceptor model, as, as discussed between the chief and finance and myself.
Okay, thank you.
And all of the police vehicles have the, for switching the traffic lights?
Yes, that's all part of the equipment that we put on the outfitted vehicles, not the two administrative or investigation and administrative vehicles. Those aren't typically equipped for emergency response.
Any other questions for Todd? If not, we'll take item F, replacement of the 282, 283 International five yard salt trucks with plow, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Next is item G, which is the replacement of the aerial lift truck.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Next is the purchase of a 218 GMC Sierra 25 HD pickup truck for Public Works, and as Todd said, we have to make a motion, because we're buying it locally.
Waiver of bid?
Waiver of bid.
Is it two separate motions?
No, it's not.
No, it's just one, right?
It's one, it just, it requires a super majority, so.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
And then the replacement, purchase of, I should say, not replace, and purchase of John Deere 35G mini excavator.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Lee.
Yay.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
The last is the replacement of the police vehicle, fleet vehicles, 461, 814, 833, and 834, and replace them with Taurus's.
So moved. Second.
Take the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
And trustee Lee.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the alcoholic beverage sales and closing times from the March 12th board meeting.
Thank you very much. Tonight in your packet, this item, we were discussing a couple changes to the villages' ordinance on alcoholic beverages. We've, we've had some issues with our 2:00 closing time on Friday and Saturday nights. We've talked to the businesses, my admin sergeant and my admin assistant have talked to several business who support this change, one hour change. I'd like to get your feedback and have a short discussion on that. There's two other items. The second item is, we discussed this for the holidays back in, in the fall, the start time for Sunday morning. If it falls on a holiday, we change it to 9:00 a.m. There's been some discussion about changing that for all Sunday morning liquor license holders. And the third item is the Class G restaurant license, also again, start time 9:00 a.m. on Sunday, so. I know I've had conversations with trustee Marisack, so if, if you'd like to comment, trustee.
Well, and I did a little, I was the one who kind of asked for us to start to look at this, because in looking, none of our restaurants, none of our bars that are open, are open until 1:00. They're all closed prior to that, so it doesn't affect them for this liquor sales. And based on the research that the admins have done, there's not a tremendous amount of sales done, so I would just assume, see, you know, like my parents used to say, nothing good happens after midnight. Well, nothing good happens selling liquor after 1:00, and it makes us one of the latest in the area. I would rather see us move it forward and shorten it to 1:00, and help alleviate people coming here to buy their liquor on their way home as they're leaving a bar or someplace. That was my premise behind trying to shorten that backend hours.
This was something I brought up like six, seven years ago, when White Hen was having a lot of problems, and the problem I had at that time was, and it still is there, but I agree with you, 1:00 should be fine, and that's what I was after. But down farther is the White, is the 7-Eleven store, which is township, they're going to be open till 2:00, and then Oswego's going to be open till 2:00. So everybody said, well, now you got these DWI guys going all the way through town to get liquor and coming all the way back. What do you want? And I said, I still think 1:00 is better, but I was voted down at the time, and we left it like it is at 2:00 because of loss of business. But to me, the problems, I agree with you, are always after 1:00, and somebody shouldn't be out buying liquor. At that time, we had people buying liquor, then we had that stop up there at Ace Hardware, and I mean, the dad had a, at 1:45 or whatever, he had his five-year-old kid with him that we had to take all the way home to by FAA, and, and this guy's coming just because we're the closest one after 1:00. So I agree with you. I think I've been after this for a long time, and I'm glad somebody brought it back up.
And I have had discussions in the last 60 days with Chief Bergner from Oswego PD. He knows my feelings, that we have to align with Aurora because they close at 1:00. I think we can, and he's waiting for a phone call from me tomorrow to give him an update on how we went, so.
Do you think Oswego's going to try and do the same thing?
I believe we're going to have further discussions, because we just don't want to push the problem down the road like trustee Lee said.
And that was something that Dwight at that time said he'd love to have it, but he didn't think the board would go for it because of the sales money. And the biggest thing is the one in the county, which I didn't even think about, that's 7-Eleven right there across 30, like 50 feet. So you're looking at everybody just drive 50 feet more. But to me, to get them to stop, we had, at the time, we had a ton coming out of Aurora. I mean, you could just see the long line of cars coming down Douglas every night, so. Yeah, I'm still for that, but any more discussion, Teresa?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. So are we looking to do across the board with all licenses, or are we looking at the restaurants? The restaurant slash bars? What are we looking to accomplish here?
Would it be packaged?
Would it be package sales as well, or just restaurants for the 1:00 a.m.?
Yeah, that's correct, but like Trustee Marisak said, it doesn't affect anybody.
It's, it's only, well, it's for the package sales. It's, it's across the board.
Right.
For all types of liquor licenses, is you want to do 1:00?
Correct. So it only affects.
They're saying none of the restaurants are open that late, so really it would only affect package sales.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
I was concerned too. I think Poor Boys is open.
And Pig Dog Pub is open till 1:00.
Yeah, but those aren't restaurants.
They have to do the 50/50 license, correct? That's how their license is set up, so they do food sales.
You're right. Is Poor Boys open until 2:00?
No, they're, they're open until 1:00.
Okay.
On Friday, Saturday.
Correct. And then this way, we're not changing theirs. They're still open till 1:00.
It's the package ones.
We're changing it from 2:00 to 1:00. Our current license says 2:00.
Okay, but if nobody's open until 2:00, what's the difference? Why do we have to change it?
Well, they are right now, the packages, the Home Pantry on Douglas and some of them are, yes.
That's what I needed clarification on.
But also, let's be clear, the restaurants are currently at 2:00 as well, right? They have the ability to be open till 2:00.
But they, yeah, they typically are.
They choose not to, but they could change that policy tomorrow and be open till 2:00 a.m. This would bring them in line with what they're currently doing. Makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
But your main concern is the packaging, that people could still walk in somewhere and buy something up until 2:00 a.m.
Correct. And there's only, I, I, I think there was only three or four businesses in town, Walmart, Walgreens, basically anybody that's open 24 hours.
I have the list right in front of me of.
You're, you're correct, Trustee Marisak.
Home Pantry, Arties, Benny's, Chiquita, three Walgreens stores, Sam's Club, Sam's Club and Walmart. They all hold Class C.
But they're, the only ones that are affected that are open late enough?
That are open after the 1:00 a.m.
Three or four of those. It's really only the 24-hour locations that are open beyond. And I'm not sure that they're doing tremendous amount of sales of alcohol between 1:00 and 2:00 that is going to impact their business so much.
Those are the people we spoke with, Walmart and Walgreens.
Okay. So my question, I, I'm coming back to the restaurant bars. Because they are closing now at 1:00, does that mean they can, they can serve up until 1:00?
That is correct.
And then when the people finish their drinks, they leave?
Correct.
So they're not having to shut their door right at 1:00? They can serve until 1:00?
Correct.
No. I, I apologize. Having been a bartender for 16 years, when your liquor license goes until 1:00, it's not when you pour it, it's when you take it off the bar. So if my liquor license goes until 1:00, at 1:00 o'clock, we're closing, we take the drinks. That's the way most bars operate. Because their liquor license ends at 1:00, they can't have alcohol out there at 1:00. I'm not sure about the enforcement of that, but that's, that's always the practice in a bar, is that you actually.
You get the last call, like 10 minutes, two?
Right.
And then at 1:00, the door gets locked, and all the beer and, and liquor gets taken away, and everybody heads out. They have to be out by 1:00. You, you can't hang until 2:00 in the morning, or 3:00 in the morning, or 4:00 in the morning.
Right. Okay, then that does potentially affect our restaurants, our restaurant slash bars, excuse me.
I'm not seeing where it does.
Because they close at 1:00.
Because if they close at 1:00.
They're asking people to leave at 1:00. We will sell liquor until 1:00.
Let me, let me ask a nuanced question, if I will, if I may. For our restaurants, let's assume they want to stay open 24 hours, but their liquor license currently says they can only stay open to serve liquor until 1:00. Let's say, let's assume this change has been made. Would it not be fair, chief, to say that they can't serve liquor, they must collect all of the liquor, but they, can't they stay open as a restaurant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
And I think, Dan, if you remember, when the state police had that one on Douglas, the last, they stopped 20 cars, the last hour, they stopped 20 cars, 16 out of the 20, did not have a driver's license, did not have insurance, and about three, four of them were DUIs. And you just go, that is amazing, knowing at that time of night, that a guy's coming at you at 1:30, and he doesn't have a license, he doesn't have insurance, and he's DUI. That, to me, just.
Yeah, that is correct.
And I hate to see him move on farther, so I hope Oswego does something on that.
And chief, just to, oh, I'm sorry, Stan.
Go ahead, please.
Just to clarify, so you've said that there have been some problems with the ability to go and purchase packaged liquor after 1:00 a.m. Has there been an uptick, or has this just been sort of the status quo that we usually see an issue when things are starting to shut down for the evening or for the early morning hours?
Yeah, this, like Trustee said, this has been on our watch for several years, and in the last couple of years, we've had several issues, serious issues, out on Douglas Road after 1:00, between that 1:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m.
Okay.
I remember talking to Dwight when he was still Oswego police, he said the biggest problem was county. I mean, they have one little place here, but county in Kendall is huge. That means Newark and all these other people be affected, and they didn't think anything would happen in county. So what's the pleasure, everybody?
I think Stan.
I wondered if we would want to entertain targeting packaged goods and not the restaurant-related licenses. It sounds like packaged goods are the real problem we're trying to address. And restaurant sales are highly supervised anyway. And anyone that's on the road with liquor that's already DUI, that's a problem with the person that sold the material as well. But I don't think that we're pointing to restaurant-related problems.
But what happens right now, all the restaurants close at 1:00? What if one of them wants to stay open until 2:00? Do we, and then there, that liquor license is allowing alcohol sales until 2:00, correct? Under the current, do we then effect change on that at that time, or?
I don't see the restaurant-related problem we're trying to solve. Maybe if, if there's no problem there, I don't see a need to solve it. If the concern is package good sales related, then that's what we should target. They're two separate license targets.
I would agree with that. I just, I, I'm concerned that some of our restaurant slash bars, I don't know, chief, if you've had any conversations with them, if they're in favor of it, I'd be much more comfortable targeting the packaged liquor at this point.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry for, for any type of confusion. I'm only talking about packaged liquors between 1:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. Changing that 2:00 a.m. close time on Friday and Saturday night to 1:00 a.m. Really doesn't affect Niners, or El Costeno, or.
Right.
Or out on Orchard, doesn't affect those.
And the start time for restaurants, 9:00 in the morning, Sunday, any problem with that? We did it for Eastern Holiday, Bassini, for one hour earlier, for all of them, like Walmart and all the rest, no problems with that?
No.
Okay.
Teresa, I believe.
Can we do a motion on this?
No.
No, this is only for discussion.
Go ahead. Keep discussing, Teresa.
Okay, so the 9:00 a.m. is for the Class G license, the restaurant slash bar, the ones who have to have 50/50 for, 50 from the food and 50 from the.
You're also looking at, for package also?
That, that is correct. What we changed in, in the fall for like Benny's, 9:00 o'clock on Sunday morning, then that means Arties could sell at 9:00 o'clock on Sunday morning. One hour, we looked at our police stats, and we don't find any, any issues with that one-hour time change. I did have one business owner talk to me after they made the change for Benny's, and that's why we're having the discussion tonight.
I'm okay with the, the packaged liquor being sold at 9:00, you know, if you need to pick it up on your way to somewhere, some event, or something like that. I think at, at this point, the Class G licenses, it's a 10:00 a.m. start?
Correct.
Correct.
I don't know that we need to move that to 9:00 a.m.
One restaurant requested that for Bloody Mary's or something, and it's one that's a big restaurant on Douglas. And.
Okay.
They asked about it, and they said, if you can do that for that hour for Benny's, can you do it for us, so.
Okay, we had an actual request for it.
Yes.
Okay, then I'm good with it.
Correct, Dan.
I'm good with it.
Yes, sir.
So just so I'm clear, so I'm going to bring back, it looks like people are good with changing the closing hours for package sales from 2:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Have a consensus on that?
Yeah.
Good with changing the Sunday start time for package and the G licenses on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.
Yes.
Okay. We will make those changes and bring it back to you then.
Can we, can we put that on consent?
Yeah.
Okay. Like I told everybody, the gash and wash is not going to be discussed tonight, so we're at mailbox policy.
Yes.
And. Staff brought this back because we didn't get to conclude the discussion at our last meeting, just for the length of the last meeting. So really, at this point, staff doesn't have any more presentation. We're just looking for feedback from the board on if you would like a change to the policy, and if so, what you would like to see those changes be, specifically the level of reimbursement and the circumstances under which reimbursement would occur. So with that, I will open it up.
We have some guests who want to speak as well.
Pardon?
We have some residents who want to speak.
Yeah, anybody want to speak on it? Go ahead, sir. Come on down. Jennifer, if you want to say something, too, you can come down after him.
Hello, my name is Jeff Springman. I live at 2998 Foxmore Drive, and my mailbox was smashed off halfway up the post, it's all jagged, same thing. I'm an elderly man, I can't be out there digging this thing out. It would kill me, and I was, I would hope that the village would take care of that and supply me with a mailbox or some reimbursement. I'm going to have to have a contractor do it, I can't do it myself, so. I have pictures of it, you could see it on my phone, it was chopped off. I actually, I heard the truck coming, and I wondered, so I looked out my window and I saw it happen, so.
And did the plow hit it? Or was it just snow? Or the snow hit it?
Right where I live is there's road curves back towards the right, and he was cutting in close. It wasn't a village truck, it was maybe a contractor's, I don't know if you had contractors' trucks going through. It wasn't the red truck.
Well, they're, they're white now, so.
We have some red and some white, but that area is served with red. Foxmore Drive is typically served with red. I don't know who was plowing through there, but they hit it. Thank you.
Did it have a flashing light?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't sound like a landscape contractor, then it sounds like an official vehicle.
I assumed it was a village vehicle, why don't they assume something else?
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Buckley. I live at 3022 Shetland Lane. You heard my husband speak earlier today. I want to thank you for the opportunity to have this on the agenda and the opportunity to speak to the, to the village. We have lived, my husband and I have lived in the Village of Montgomery now for 16 years. We are good citizens. We, we work in the community, we believe in this community. And what happened, I believe on, what was the date?
The 11th.
The 11th, okay. Was pretty drastic. We share a mass, a, a mailbox with our neighbor, and I believe my husband sent you all a picture of what, what occurred, and it was like the gentleman that just spoke, who is apparently our neighbor. It was smashed down the middle, and then there was a package that was thrown. We have tried to repair it. It's not something that might, I mean, we have tried to do it, and it's to the point where we would have to smash the concrete, dig that out, and put something else. And I, I would be grateful if, if the village would really take this into consideration. This isn't something that I think, I, I don't want to say it was malicious, but we're left as, as citizens now dealing with this, where we have to now, our neighbor and, and us have to go and pick up the mail from the post office. Every time we go there, the, the folks that are behind the desk say, oh, they haven't done anything about this yet, and like, no. And so we go there and pick up our mailbox, or our mail. So I would be grateful if, if the village could seriously consider taking responsibility or at least reimbursing the citizens for this.
Do you have a plastic mailbox? Or was, was it a plastic mailbox? You have no mailbox now, but.
We have the mailbox, like, we don't have a mailbox right now.
But what was.
It is a plastic post.
It was a plastic, okay.
A metal, an actual metal mailbox.
And there's, there was no 4x4 inside of it?
Okay.
So there was no structural integrity to it, and the easiest replacement would probably be just to drop the 4x4 down inside that. Since the concrete was poured around the plastic sleeve, which is intended to house a 4x4, you wouldn't have to remove that concrete, you could just slide it right down in there.
I think Stan and I are going to get to that solution here potentially pretty quick. You're in Foxmore?
I'm on Shetland Lane.
Foxmore?
It's, it's Foxmore.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And that's typical of both Fairfield and Foxmore, correct? Okay.
Thank you.
It's tough getting your mail every day and driving for it. I agree with that. That shouldn't happen. Todd, can you kind of explain, I know we had a couple different reports, one from Stan on the surrounding communities, and then yours on the 150 reports, and right now, the policy is we give 50 bucks? Is that correct?
Correct. So in the last meeting, I estimated that we had about 150 reports, it's actually 105. And our practice, or the way we've applied our practice, has been to reimburse $50 to those where the truck has physically hit the mailbox, not where it has succumbed to snow that just tumbles off the edge of the plow. Every mailbox in town is affected by snow tumbling off the edge of the plow, and in cases where the mailbox has not either been installed with the most standard, you know, with the wooden timber inside to give it some support, or if it's deteriorated over time, those are the ones that we're, we're happening to see fail.
And how many mailboxes are in Foxmore?
755, if memory serves. I did put it in the notes. Well, that's not Foxmore alone. Foxmore and Fairfield both share a similar style mailbox. So the two neighborhoods combined, single-family homes amount to about 755.
Then with the shared, like in Foxmore, they're shared, so that number would be halved, unless you're factoring that, it has, it has to be halved.
Correct, but in historical practice anyhow, if, if we hit one of those, we've reimbursed both homeowners, so then it therefore doubles again.
What I'm thinking is, my observation is, it's the post that usually breaks, and the mailbox survives. But there's, there wouldn't be a reason to reimburse two people if the post were the problem, or they've reimbursed them for half the amount, but typically, the mailbox survives, mailbox survives, the post is what shares off.
We reimburse up to $50 based on the receipts that they submit to us. Some cases, people submit $60, $75 worth of receipts, we give them $50. In some cases, we get receipts for $32, and we reimburse just the $32, so.
Some of those pictures did show the mailboxes that you showed us separated, because they were, they were plastic. They separated, and those things just were trash, basically, but at the same time, you moved in 15 years ago, so a lot of those are 15 years old. But I think I said this before, my sister knocked one down on Jericho Road, and the guy said, give me, it was back in the old days, the guy said, give me 50 bucks, and my sister said, my brother can do that easier. Well, I'll tell you, that was, and the guy had to have it down three feet, and I said, next time, we're just giving the cash, you got to be kidding. It is a chore, and I don't know how, this guy just had it in the ground, but I don't know how you would take concrete out if you were a person like this gentleman. I don't know how you'd dig that concrete out to put it in. I like the idea, you said, with plastic sleeve is there, and it is there, it's, it's damaged in the top, which means it won't be quite as high, but put wood in there, and then the box on that, that'd be a good solution, if it worked that way.
Most times when the concrete's in, in the ground, we just cut it flush and put the new one right next to it and not, not mess with all the concrete. Because you're right, you would need machinery to pull that out, and then you'd have to backfill, and it would likely be too loose to.
If you're putting, if you're putting the, the new post right next to the adjacent one, you just dig down the side, you, you remove the concrete. I'm a landscaper, I'm used to this stuff. The issues are, it sounds like, there, there are few issues here. First, Fairfield and Foxmore, they have substandard mailboxes. The, what the builder put in there is essentially crap, and is ineffective. We need to come up with some sort of standard, village standard, that coordinates with what the standard is for the postal service. That way, it's the correct distance away from the curb, it's the correct height, but also, it's installed properly. And a lot of these, like, when I purchased my home, we didn't, it didn't come with the mailbox. I had to run out to, to Home Depot or Menards or somewhere and get it, and put it in concrete and make sure it was proper. We need to come up with some sort of standard that is, okay, once I, I destroy your mailbox, and I'm all for increasing from 50 to $75, I'm giving you $75, but you have to do it as per this standard. Next year, or two years from now, when you come back to me and say, oh, the, the thing destroyed my mailbox, was it as per the standard? Because we've already paid you here. It's got to be, if it's as per the standard, I have no problem as a village to pay for it again. If it wasn't installed as per that standard, then you're kind of on your own. And then the other issue is, there's the debate on whether or not a mailbox was physically hit, or whether it was the snow. I'm fine with either one. You know, I, I, if, obviously, if a plow truck physically hits your mailbox, that's the village. If a plow truck is, is going fast enough, or the snow is heavy enough, and it damages your mailbox, well, that's kind of on the village. But I think in order to do those things, we have to have a set standard, and that's the, the facilitator for getting the additional $75 and that sort of thing. We have to have the standard in place. That way, we can make sure, okay, this is, it's as per whatever it is, and it can be, we can have two or three options for the village, and we're not going to make homeowners go out and change their mailbox, but as they go and as they replace, or as they install new in the future, it's got to be one of two or three options.
I would just use the postal service as standard. Why should we reinvent the wheel?
The postal service tells you the height and the distance off the curb. It doesn't tell you it needs to be in concrete.
That's correct.
That is correct.
They don't care if the farmer makes it out of an old wagon wheel and welds it, they don't care if it's plastic, if it's at the right height and the right distance, they deliver mail.
Then I misunderstood that comment at the last meeting.
And anymore, they, you don't even have to use concrete. There's a new foam, like, two-piece foam thing that you can dig a hole, and it hardens within, I think it sets within a couple hours.
Minutes.
Minutes?
Yeah.
And it is just as good as concrete.
Now, I have a question, though, regarding this. So the suggestion is that we come up with this standard. So I just want to go three years from now. How are we enforcing that? How are we enforcing, we can now do inspections on whether you installed it correctly?
No, i- if you want, if, if, what I'm saying is that if I've damaged, if the, you're the resident, I've damaged your mailbox, I'm, I'm Mr. Village. I've damaged your mailbox, you've come in and said, hey, you've damaged my mailbox, here's the check for $75, you, here's the standard stapled to that, you have to install it as per this standard. If you don't, at some point, if your mailbox is screwed up, and the, however, whenever it's screwed up, you come back to me, I'm going to say, Mr. Marasek, we've already reimbursed you $75 and given you the standard that the village is now, has adopted for mailboxes, you're on your own for this.
But now I've sold my house, because effectively, what has just happened, happened. The builder put in substandards, and now we're looking to fix the builder's mistake. I put mine in correctly, I spent the money, I bought the cedar, I put the, put it in concrete, because I didn't want to have this problem.
Right.
The builder out there put these things in in plastic, didn't reinforce them, did a substandard job, and now we're looking to pick up the bill for that. And if I, if I do a bad job of installing it with your $75 and sell my property, now Teresa bought my house, next year she's coming in, what are you going to tell her? She just bought the house.
Who's going to keep track of this, is Todd?
Yeah.
Going to keep track of every house? I mean, and I guess that's my problem, too. Where I live, my mailbox is over 15 years old. It's a metal one attached to the house, and it swings around like this when you open the top and throw it in. I keep repainting it, because it's getting old, rusty, and I keep repainting it so it looks good. But now I'm paying for the other 650 houses out there that haven't had a problem yet.
But part of that.
I mean, it's, it's like, my neighbor's going to say, well, what are you doing for us? You know, it's, it is bad that they did that, but I'm just looking at the, and, and it's nice we can sell this with the 105 people, but what happens down the road with the 650? Or like you say, somebody.
What happens, though, at some point, the village has some skin in the game here, because they either have approved the covenants, or, or whatever was, was.
White fence.
Was adopted or drawn up when Fairfield, Foxmore was created.
White post, black mailbox. That's all it stated. White post, black mailbox.
Well, then, you should have been a little bit more specific.
It said, white post, black mailbox. And again, I'm fine with the $75, and I'm okay with that. I'm a little concerned about when the plow pushes the snow and knocks one over, because I know you've been very proactive. Director Hopkinstead has done a great job of proactively driving the neighborhoods and knocking, you know, basically sending a letter saying, your mailbox is in borderline disrepair. If it falls over because of a snow push, we are not fixing it. You're being forewarned, because I know people that leave theirs in disrepair, because, well, I'll just make it one more season, and then the village will give me 50 bucks towards my new mailbox. We've seen it happen time and time again in our HOA, with people where the HOA has gotten on them, and they just want to wait. And I think the HOA has actually provided the village with information that we've sent these people letters that their mailboxes were already bad. Now the guy wants to get it replaced on the village's dime. I'm okay with the $75. I'm okay with trying to provide some additional information for proper materials to avoid the problem in the future. I have a problem with, when Mother Nature dumps four feet of snow and they have to push it, it's going to knock mailboxes over. And they, we can't replace 8,000 mailboxes. We don't have the money to do that. You know, and I, I did see somebody sent a picture where somebody put some posts in and a board to stop the snow from hitting their mailboxes. People get pretty creative about it, and I'm not suggesting that. But at some point, we have to plow the snow, and they have to be going 15, 20 miles an hour to get the snow to clear the curb, to do the effective job of clearing the streets, but this is going to become an ongoing perpetual problem with inspecting and trying to figure out who fixed it correctly, who did it properly. I just want to see a logical solution, but thinking down the road. How do we remedy this down the road? Because again, we're doing our job removing the snow from the street. We can't be liable for the mailboxes. I, I just, I don't see how, if we hit it, I get that, if we hit it. But if the snow push knocks one over that was installed poorly, I don't know why that's the village's responsibility at this point. That's the builder's fault. They got a free mailbox from the builder. I didn't get a free mailbox, I bought mine and installed it properly.
Todd, how much is that four by four wood? Because I, we all have pictures of Jason's mailbox where it was chopped off, but if a wood would fit in there, that might work, but I don't know what kind of condition his mailbox was. It might have been flattened like a pancake, and, but I don't know what mailboxes run, because like I say, I don't have a mailbox like these people, so.
At your request, I did a little bit of research on Menard's website. A standard four by four cedar post is $1,299. The pre-made cedar crossarm that's already cut and assembled for mailbox installation is $3,999. A middle-of-the-road quality black metal mailbox, $2,497. And then those, those polyplastic covers, which aren't intended to be the only portion you're putting in the ground, they're intended to go over a four by four. They range anywhere from 1998 to 5671. So, to properly install a mailbox with the polycover out in the Fairfield-Foxmore area, you're looking at about $95 in supplies. If you just did it on a wooden timber, same, same mailbox, $8,196, and that's not painted, obviously, that's just red cedar, but you could certainly paint that. So, you know, at the last meeting, I was asked, and I said probably about 150 bucks. It appears that supplies are a bit less.
So the, installing it with wood and painting it white is acceptable, because there seems to be, and Trustee Bond had mentioned, some illusion of the fact that they need to be this white plastic, and really, all it says is, white with a black mailbox.
It seems that.
Which isn't the case, and, and I'm not sure, and I would defer to the attorney for this, but you don't have an HOA anymore.
It's in the annexation agreement.
Okay, but who enforces that?
The village.
Well, then we're failing, because there's about 60 mailboxes that I drove past that aren't white posts with black mailboxes. So, I, then we're failing. If that's our responsibility to do that, which I find odd that we would be into that market, that's an HOA's responsibility, not the village's.
Can I offer something on that, just historically?
Yeah.
In both Fairfield and Foxmore, and a couple other developments that we're, we were doing at that time, that was when we were hot and heavy in development mode, there was a desire on the part of the village board to see an aesthetic similarity in mailboxes, so it wasn't about standards, it wasn't about support or strength, it was about uniformity. And so the idea there was to encourage uniformity. Understand the annexation agreement is the only way we could mandate that, so that's why it was put into the annexation agreement. The other thing I would remind you is, annexation agreements do expire, and if this has been 15 years, then another couple of years, if not sooner, that mandate will expire.
Well, can't the village board look at that annexation agreement and amend it?
Not unless the, the residents wish to, and in this case, it would have to be 100% of them in all likelihood.
Because right now, it sounds like the only uniformity we're going for in mailboxes is broken. So eventually, that's what, that's all that's going to happen over at Fairfield-Foxmore, is broken mailboxes.
Well, again, I think that the exhibit only did not speak in terms of.
Quality.
Quality, what the materials were, was color and design.
And I remember when people bought those houses 15 years ago, or whatever, they'd say, oh, our neighborhood looks great where we were, they had red mailboxes, all, these look so nice. Well, everybody thought it was nice aesthetics, but not real good quality. But if they lasted 15 years, that's quite a while, but now is the time when you start knocking them off, and like you said, there's 600 out there, and, but I agree with Doug, 50 bucks is not enough. I mean, 75 would get the guy really close. The gentleman up there would have to find somebody to, unless he's got a post, a hole still there where he can slide one in. But it's not the greatest, put it that way. I, I don't see going higher than 75 when you got that many. I mean, you're just looking at a line item in the budget, just for one area of town, which, like I said, my area of town would say, what are you doing? Or you guys' area where you put your own in? But I think 50 bucks isn't enough if the mailbox is, is such, you know. But, any other discussion?
I'm okay with the 75. I think that, I think that's reasonable in terms of the supplies that are there. You know, if it was my home, I'd be in the same position. I'd have to hire someone to come and do it for me as well. I wouldn't be out there digging the hole. I'm a little concerned about using the taxpayer money to basically right something that the developer did wrong. I think we do need to figure out a way to be proactive and encourage people to start replacing those mailboxes and, with better materials, but I just, I would have a really hard time spending taxpayer money to say, sorry, guys, your developer kind of screwed up, so the village is going to come in and fix it. It, it just, I, I don't think it would go over well at all.
Unless you adopt a village standard, we're going to be talking about this in 15 years. It's going to, every spring.
At the same time, how long do you think a mailbox would last? You know what I mean? You can't, my lawnmower don't last 15 years, so it's kind of.
Mine's been in for 12, but I also maintain it. I paint it every year and make sure everything's correct.
Here's the other question. Gary had 20 that he said he agreed with, that it was not bound by our stuff. What about the other 85 that said, and some of them, we showed pictures of, that definitely, if I, if I, that was my mailbox, I'd say, look, unless they ran over this completely out in the middle of the street, this is my problem, because the mailbox was separated, you could see was, was actually almost round because it exploded like, and I would say, that thing was just too old, and tough luck. But out of, I imagine there's more than 25 that would probably, quality-wise, I don't know. But if you take 100, that's 7,500 bucks.
And I just want to, I respectfully disagree with Trustee Youngerman's comment about, this is going to be an every-year thing, because we've sat on this board, I've been here now for five years, and this is the first time we've had a problem. And it might be, we had a pretty rough winter this winter compared to the last four, so maybe it's just luck of the draw. I don't know what previous boards saw prior to that during a heavy snowfall. But when I talk to coworkers and people that have had this happen, several people at work, you know, the plow knocked, you know, the plow hit their mailbox, knocked it down, and 75 bucks was pretty average going rate, and it's a check. They don't come out and do the work, because that starts to run into the hundreds of thousands of dollars by the time you start replacing all of these mailboxes. And I agree, you put it in one foot, two feet over from where it was, and you cover up that concrete, just like you do with fences and swings in your backyard. You take them down and you cover that cap.
Well, I think, Pete, you and I both went on the board 17 years or more, you have, and we never had, we had five, you know.
32 years.
Okay, we've had five or 10, 20 mailboxes with worse snow than now, but now, it just seems like they're all falling apart because they're 15 years old. But I think we should do something for the people that did.
That's right.
Get knocked down, you know.
And, and to go with Trustee Youngerman's comment, I don't necessarily have a problem establishing some type of standard. I think that would be very helpful, but I think it could probably only be a suggestion, because we do run into that problem then of who polices that, and who, you know what I mean? Who keeps track of all of that?
You don't have to police it. The next time they come in and say their mailbox is, is ruined or destroyed, then you go out and look, and, okay, was it done according to the standard? No? Okay, you're on your own. You don't have to go out and say, yes, 2109 Emma is as per standard, 2111 Emma is not. You don't have to do that. It, it's, as it comes in, if they want something, if I've already paid, and they come in and say, oh, no, we, five years ago, we replaced our mailbox, and it's not up to whatever standard, then they're not getting their money.
But I, what I'm getting at is, I think it's a good idea to put a standard out there, particularly in this case where we have the two subdivisions where a substandard material was useful. I don't know if they've lasted quite a long time. I, I don't know if that's the correct way to describe it, but at this point, there could be. But at this point, there could be better materials used than what the developer had used. So if we encourage people to use the better sta, or the better materials with a standard in terms of where it's located, I think that's what we need to do so that we don't end up with problems every spring.
Todd, any comment on the paperwork, or the, who makes the decision that it's whacked or not whacked, or?
Typically, we establish one or two people that are on the same wavelength as far as how to identify what's been run over. If we do the evaluation shortly after the snow, it's pretty obvious to tell, because the plow or the truck tires will have also hit the curb, and, and you can see evidence that the truck has kind of left the roadway. It doesn't happen often. If the evaluation is done in July, it's going to be very hard to tell, because the destroyed one is gone, and the new one is already in place. I'm not really trying to voice an opinion one way or another, but I do understand what Doug raised earlier. If the house sells, I mean, even Trustee Youngerman's kind of proposal there makes perfect sense. But if, if we reimburse you and you agree to do one of the three options, but then you sell your house and you didn't do one of the three options, you just took the money and went, then we owe the next owner some money as well, I would say.
Because we didn't check it.
It's really whatever you all decide, it's-
A couple of those pictures had one post, two mailboxes. And I could see the gentleman up there who was on a curve, I could see somebody turning a little short and hitting it. If it's out in the middle of nowhere, the guy'd have to fall asleep or something to hit it, but, whatever.
It happens. I mean, I'm not trying to say we don't hit mailboxes, but we own the ones that we hit. And when you evaluate them, it's generally pretty easy to tell. While it's metal, it's tin, and the hinges and things aren't significantly reinforced. If a truck or even a, a hand smacks that thing, it's kind of out of shape. It's pretty easy to tell. When it's, looks like it just came out of the box and it's laying in the snow, I can assure you, our truck didn't hit that. There's no way that it would be its shape. It just wobbled off the pole, and it fell down in the snow as the snow was rolling off the plow. And oftentimes, the post comes over as well, because of the weight of the snow.
Much pleasure, gentlemen. Any other comments? Stan?
We could consider a, a horizon on this. Maybe we have a three-year program, and we cap it in that fashion. I'm not-
You, you made a-
Go ahead, Pete.
Go ahead, Pete.
You made a, Marisick, $75. Get it, give them the $75, we could be here all night, going back and forth.
We have that.
So let's get, get on the ball and start-
Last meeting was after midnight, Pete. I agree with you. I'd say we were here after midnight last meeting, so we agree with you. I'm trying to close it up.
It's, it'll kind of ridiculous. You owe them, our truck's the one that hit them, then pay the bill. That's all I can say. If you wreck with your car over somebody's lawn, you could get the insurance company to get a, get your money back.
Anything else, Mr. Bond?
I think we, in my way of thinking, if the snow causes the damage, that's still the result of a village effort. Just the same as if my car throws a rock and it hits somebody's windshield, my insurance company will recognize my liability for that, because I set that problem in motion. So I, the important change to me is that we appear to be getting more strict about the truck had to hit it versus the snow. I drove one of our streets, yeah, Sunday, Cambridge, and we had four mailboxes in a row, three of the posts had snapped completely off, the other one was cracked, not, so it'll be gone next year. But beyond that, a series of mailboxes further on that street were twisted. They hadn't snapped, they hadn't bent, but they were twisted. The mailbox was no longer perpendicular with the street. That's probably snow damage as well. And now they're in a weakened condition, and they're subject to breaking again. There's, you've got to give the material some kind of credit for twisting instead of breaking. And if 15 years is some kind of magic number for when they're worn out, why isn't 14? We had four times the number of broken mailbox posts this year than the last two years. So we had big snows last year, we had big snows the year before.
No, we did not. All due respect, sir, we did not. We had very, we didn't have a snowfall over two inches the last two seasons. This year, we saw 20 inches in nine days.
Yes, but you didn't plow 20 inches at once.
No, you're correct. But eight and a half was the largest of those storms. But in the past two seasons, we did not have very heavy snowfalls. Again, all due respect. I'm not trying to argue, I just wanted to point a matter of point.
Our overtime bill suggests that we did have, but I, I won't argue the point with you at this moment. But I distinctly remember some pretty serious snowfalls in the history of when I've been here. But the issue is, I think, are we going to accept responsibility for snow-induced damage? Are, are we going to have some kind of communication, I think, with the neighborhood saying, "We, you really don't have to use these plastic posts, or if you do choose to use them, they need to be reinforced?" I, I know a number of people in Fairfield and Foxmore have been assuming that they have to replace with the same material. So it would be a relief to them to know that that's not some kind of requirement. And for myself, I'd be willing to accept some kind of time period, you know, we'll, we'll stand behind this problem for two years, three years, some kind of cap on it. And the damage has, in my view, could be caused either by the truck or the snow. We, we have to determine some kind of policy. I think what we're seeing now is, the board never did really set a policy. So that's part of the value of this discussion as well. And I, I would argue that the impact of snow that we throw onto somebody's yard is some, a burden that we need to share.
Possibly, but at the same time, even 50 bucks times 650, $32,000 for an online budget, what, for three years? That's kind of crazy.
Well, let's revisit the numbers again, because that number I don't agree with.
Right.
There are 500, roughly 500 homes in Foxmore, two mailboxes per post. So there's 250, not 500 something. And for 15 years, we've never had to replace them all. We've never, we've never come close to replacing them all.
Yes, we have.
Well?
I had one, when I was head of Public Works. Some old lady called me up, I went over, looked at it, she got a check, and that was
So I, I don't think our exposure is at replacing all of them, as, but we can control that. We could say for the next two years, or for the next three years, this is our policy.
So are we going to do the communication to all of Montgomery, though?
Yes, absolutely.
So we're going to have to do a mailing to all of Montgomery?
Well, we do with every water bill.
With the water bill?
Mm-hmm.
And nobody reads anything on that, I'm sorry to say.
That would be my concern, is when we, when we do things in the water bill, we tend to not get very positive responses from it.
So the real problem are the people that come to us and say, "You broke my mailbox." And that's a chance to hand them something that says, "Here's our policy." And the ones that don't have a problem, if they don't read our correspondence, then we've lost that moment.
Pete, you want to make a motion on the 75 dollars?
I'll make the motion.
For the 75 bucks?
Hold on, hold on.
And then, go ahead.
I don't, this is an item for discussion only.
Oh, that's right.
So we need direct, we need to direct staff to create-
We're just looking to get feedback, and then we'll bring back to you.
Here's the thing, we keep talking about this, but as I look at our agenda, in consent agenda, we just consented to approve accounts payable on the amount of just under $400,000. We did a waiver of bid and award of contract for $146,000. We did award of a contract for water main improvements for over $600,000. We just did an engineering enterprises thing for $53,000. We just purchased a bunch of new vehicles for tens of, hundreds of thousands of dollars. At some point, if we don't nip this in the bud and come up with some sort of plan, this is going to be turned into a 50, $60,000 item as it drags out for years. And that's why we need to come up with some sort of plan, some sort of standard.
I think, just to be clear, all we were saying is, you don't need to make a motion.
Right.
Just give us the general consensus, we'll bring back an ordinance or a policy following whatever your direction is.
No, I understood that, I wasn't done complaining, though.
And, and just for the record, I would like to put my name on the list, because I'd like to get my 75 dollars, because I paid for mine and installed it myself correctly 15 years ago. So as long as we're going to use the taxpayer dollars, I'd like to get my 75 back.
No, because you're in a public meeting, and you said you installed it properly, so you're out of luck.
Well, we don't want to get into a, a big deal. I mean, are guys going to pay for my $150,000 removal from a tree that was in, in the freeway, or, you know, in the front of my yard? Every resident's going to do that, so you can't keep paying these things for minor things all the time. You've got to make some kind of-
Well, I understand that, but like I said before, the village has some skin in the game here, because of the annexation agreement, that we should have been more specific. That's the issue of previous village boards.
It said, "White post, black mailbox." They didn't say, "Use toothpicks." It's, you assume-
They didn't say not use toothpicks.
Mine did. Well, actually, my HOA said, "Use a cedar post and a cedar mailbox." That's the way ours was written. And this is really, falls back to an HOA issue.
Right.
Because if they want to enforce their own covenants, then that's what an HOA is for, but it's dissolved. It got dissolved.
It never was an HOA issue, it was part of the land acquisition agreement. So just don't confuse the two.
It's Anderson's advice, let him work one out, and then bring it back to the board.
Sounds good.
We do seem to have agreement on the amount of-
On the amount.
Correct.
The exact part I'm clear on right now is 75 dollars, everybody seems to be good with.
All right. That's, that's a start, Jeff.
Yes, it is.
Well, everybody else will throw their opinions at Jeff later on, okay?
I would make a comment, it's been 90 days or more since many of these incidents happened, and we still have people going to the post office every day to get their mail. And this item has shown up twice now, is almost dead last on the agenda. If I were going to the mailbox or the post office every day, or any of us were, I think it would be higher up on the agenda, and I think we'd address it sooner.
Todd, can you, can you work that out with a few people that are going for their mail and somehow fix that?
We can certainly put a barricade with a temporary. At anybody's request, we do that annually. But as Mayor Brawley said, I think at the last meeting, people are welcome to go ahead and repair their mailboxes regardless of this conversation. It's not a task that the village typically does, so if you want to go ahead and have that done, save your receipts. I'm just reiterating his words here. But we will certainly deliver a temporary on a barricade there tomorrow, so they can start receiving mail.
Okay, two mailboxes still.
We can mount two to one barricade.
Because of their, yeah, situation there.
Not a problem.
And the gentleman up there, too.
Second, Ed.
Hey. Mr. Grubin, 2998, Foxmore. I had requested a, a, the Sawhorse to put my mailbox on, from the village gentleman was there with the red truck the next day or so, and I never heard anything more back from him.
You guys, you guys addressed, Todd?
I do now, yes. I apologize if somebody let it slip through the cracks.
I'm, I'm pretty confident you'll have it tomorrow morning.
But I'm confused.
Okay, it's on the ground right now, and there's, luckily, they're still putting mail in it.
That's kind of amazing. Good for the mailman. All right, got, you would-
The 75 dollars.
Yeah, and the rest, and the rest of the information will be given to you, and we'll discuss this next time.
It took us 30 minutes to discuss 75 dollars?
I mean, if you want a straw poll, I'm 75 dollars, and we're not fixing from snow pushes. That's my, you know, if you want to poll the board, and that's where I'm at on it. Is, I'm okay with the 75, but not fixing-
Everybody gives a 75.
Snow push.
You would say not reimburse for snow pushes.
Reimbursed for snow push, 75.
75, reimbursed for snow push, and village standard.
Okay. 75, reimburse only if we hit it, and reimburse for snow push, too.
Snow or whatever, snow, Pete, if it's snow hits it, or has the truck hit it?
This is stupid.
No matter what?
If, if it was a village truck, we've had it in the past, we, we should pay for it. We knocked it down, we should pay for it.
So you're saying, "Snow, too?"
If the snow hit it, not the truck.
Not the truck.
Yeah, like I said, he says there was one incident that they could see where the, the truck went over up into the grass.
Yeah.
So then you don't take, take care of it.
Okay.
75 dollars.
Yes?
Yes.
Not if, not, not from a snow push, no. And I'm good with a standard, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the standard, too.
See, I had a good idea tonight.
Credit for that.
And we're making progress. 75 bucks, pass.
So where are we at?
I think, as far as I can tell, Marisack and Spurling said, "Not snow push." And I think the other else said, "Hit it or snow push."
Where are you?
Snow push.
So it's a snow, so 75 bucks and a snow push.
So whatever hits it, whether it's the snow or the truck.
Okay.
I believe I heard four say.
Plus a few standards out there.
Yes.
Okay, I have a good question. And then we can wrap it up.
Okay.
So Director Hoppenstedt?
Yes, ma'am.
With the snow push, which seems like it is, it's going to be, if there's damage from a snow push, we're going to reimburse. Does that mean we can't clear the streets curb to curb?
We can do whatever you direct us to do. I would recommend going curb to curb. It's for the safest travel and for stormwater conveyance as the snow melts. As we saw this year, 2.3 inches of rain, just a few days after 20 inches of snow had accumulated, it was in our best interest to get it to the curb. That's-
Right.
Typically what agencies do. But we can do whatever you direct us to do.
I'm just saying, that's, that could essentially be a problem.
We would still recommend going curb to curb.
That could be a problem, then. It could get awfully expensive for the taxpayers to repair mailboxes.
Do remember, you can change your mind. You can pass an ordinance or a policy, and if it works out one season, it's very bad for you, you can always adjust it.
Okay.
All right. I feel a little better about the feedback now.
Better?
All right, last thing, microgrid energy.
You want to introduce it, Rich?
Hold on. Sure, Brian is here for microgrid energy. This is the topic we talked about at the end of last meeting. It was well after 11 o'clock, so some of you might not remember that. But we did talk about the 10 acres at Awkut and Albright, that's primarily in a floodplain area that's heavily wooded, and would need to be cleared to put up a solar energy field. And Brian's going to talk about that proposal. They're asking for TIP dollars in the future to help support the clearing primarily of this site.
Excuse me. Thank you, everybody, citizens of Montgomery. I think it was about a year ago that Char led a, a meeting right up over there to talk about the Future Energy Jobs Act and solar energy for the citizens of Illinois. A lot has happened since then. The Future Energy Jobs Act is in the process of being administratively approved by the Illinois Power Agency, and it is set to be promulgated summer of this year. Now, what does that mean for everybody in this room? ComEd, the, the IOUs within the state, ComEd, Mid-American, AMRIN, have to support renewable energy. It's mandated in the Future Energy Jobs Act, it's the law of the land. The funding is coming from the utilities to make solar inexpensive for the citizens of Illinois. What we're doing at microgrid is, we're working with in-users, be it commercial- What we're doing at microgrid is, we're working with in-users, be it commercial industrials, water utilities, municipalities, et cetera, to bring forward concepts, develop these systems, which do cost a lot of front-end CapEx, and basically bring those to market for when this program opens up in the summer of this year. What has happened since last year is, we are out looking for sites that can be developed into a, a solar energy system. Typically, we're trying to find sites that are very easy to develop, farmland, like it or not. I, I'm of the, my whole fabric has always been to take property that is blighted and turn that into, you know, repurpose it into a solar energy system, bring it back into use for the town, village, community, college, whatever. I've done this in upstate New York, in Massachusetts, a lot on the east coast in Rhode Island. I wanna bring that opportunity to do that here. I, I started here in Montgomery a year ago, I think it's great that I've been able to since then find this blighted property that's in the industrial park, that's in the TIF district, and it's gonna remain a blighted piece of land for, forever. I've gotten the property owner's attention, and he's agreed, I would say it's a tentative agreement, to allow for us to develop that property into a solar energy system. And we're, we're paying him a, a land lease rate that is very typical for what we would pay a farmer. It's not anything outrageous. I think he just wants to end up even on his taxes, you know, and that's how we kinda planned it out. So, the next step becomes, how do we even get this piece of property to the condition where it's, it's like a, a piece of farmland? And that property needs a lot of work. That's why I, I'm requesting money to have a company go out there, it doesn't even have to, it's not, it's not microgrid, it's a local landscaping company or grading company, to go out there and clear out that land. Let us do our due diligence to get it into the community solar program when it rolls out this summer. Get the community solar system built, and then we will have an exclusivity with the residents, the citizens of Montgomery, to wheel out the energy from that solar energy system to the village, to the commercials, to the strip mall owners, to the residents, to whomever, at a, a price point that's gonna be, I mean, we've already mapped out the financials. The price point is gonna be, I mean, I've seen your municipal aggregate program pricing with ComEd, it's like at six cents. If we can do this community solar system right, we're talking like, less than three cent a kilowatt hour, for the residents of Montgomery, for the village hall here. I mean, what is your bill annually for energy, for the village of Montgomery? You know, I know I'm asking for, for TIF money, which is very valuable, I get it, but I do think that you're gonna reap the benefits from this, right after we flip the switch and commission it, and start sending you guys clean energy. Not only that, it'll serve as a, a beacon of sorts, you know, having the town of Montgomery being a thought leader. You know, I, I've, I've been regularly going and, and talking to municipalities across the state about this, and the ones that are gonna get out in front of this, I think, are going to be that thought leader, and it's going to attract businesses that wanna have that green energy. And we, we could have that right here, a, a community solar system for the village of Montgomery. It's gonna take some effort, without a doubt. It's not a square farmland out over there, at Awkut and Albright, it's, it's a mess, but we can get there, I've, I've done it before.
Since you said you've been around the state and talked to other people, who has agreed with you, and has done it?
Well, I mean, right now, you have, I, I believe, Plano is, they were in agreement, how do they get there is to be determined. Sandwich is also looking at it. Kendall County just approved it to take a wooded lot and turn it into a solar energy Downstate, well, actually, Fox Metro is working, they put out an RFP, I, I helped with that original concept. Fox Metro's moving forward. A few other, I don't have the list in front of me, but there's a lot, and, you know, it, it, the program's real.
I just got two quick questions. What if the state doesn't approve it, because they haven't approved a lot of things this summer? If they don't do it, then we're just sitting, I guess, or everybody's sitting, and how do you sell it, say, to any of our houses, direct? I mean, if you looked at it, three cents, the price is right, but are you just looking to sell, like, to somebody in your area there, and some industry close to you, or what do you, how do you do this, I guess, am I saying?
So, so to answer everyone's concerns, including mine, the, the, the Future Energy Jobs Act, first and foremost, it's being funded by the utilities, they're under a mandate to fund it, so the money's not coming from bankrupt Springfield, all right? The, the state cannot shut it down. It, it's the law of the land, and it's already cleared, I think the ICC has already heard the first, or in the final draft, and that final draft is gonna be approved on April fourth, and then they're gonna hire the program administrator, who's gonna set up how the system's gonna operate. So, it's going to happen. Now, how do we manage the subscriptions, the people who want that energy? It, it, you know, the, the solar energy system is, you know, gonna generate enough energy for like, I would say, anywhere from twenty-eight-hundred to three-thousand residents, houses, all right? Now, the way that community solar works is, the folks who sign up for it, we, we are responsible, as the owner-operator of that solar energy system, to get them enrolled into the mechanics of our system, and coordinating that with ComEd, the utility, 'cause ComEd will then, you know, credit the, the resident, or commercial, or town, or whatever, the solar energy that's coming from the system per that subscription. So, you know, that, that, that's on us to manage it.
So, I'm just trying to make, wrap my head around the, the physical engineering of this. So, the energy from that solar field is gonna be wired to my home, or it's just going into the ComEd grid and I'm getting credits for it because I signed up for it?
Exactly. It, it's virtual net metering, so it's gonna go into the ComEd lines, and then it's gonna get wheeled out, I mean, in theory, it can be wheeled out to anybody in ComEd. We could sell a subscription from that solar energy system to a high-rise in downtown Chicago.
Because the reality is, that energy's not going there, it's just going into, into the pot.
Yeah, it's going into the grid, and then ComEd's crediting the in-users who are subscribing.
And I just wanna clarify, 'cause you've said this twice, and I wanna understand exactly when you say it, what you mean. You twice have said, "It's the law of the land."
Yes.
Who, is this a federal law?
No, no, it's a state law.
Okay, so this is an unfunded state mandate, against the energy?
It, it is, yes. It's, it's a state mandate that the utilities have to implement community solar within the state, and it has to be virtually net metered. So, it's not a physical wire, it's gonna go into the grid, and then it's gonna credit back the folks who subscribe.
And is there a cost for a subscription?
Um, no.
Okay.
Just, you know, if, I mean, the, the way that it's gonna work is, we will generate a, a website, I think there's already a website being put into place for community solar as a whole. But, the way that I, well, not but, the way that I envision this is that because the village of Montgomery is going to help us get there, we are going to have exclusivity for the residents, for the citizens of the town of Montgomery, because the price for the solar that's going to be coming from the solar energy system is gonna be cheaper than what you're paying right now, by a lot, you know, by over fifty percent.
And you said that it's gonna generate roughly, and I'm not gonna hold you, to twenty-eight-hundred, so it's gonna be capped to the first twenty-eight-hundred Montgomery residents that register?
Yeah, yeah, so, i- it's gonna be whoever wants to sign on first, and the, the thing with the subscriptions is they're very fluid, so, and that's on us to manage it. Right now, we're managing twenty-eight community solar systems in Colorado, which is a, a forefront leader in community solar in the country. So, what, what we basically do is, we have folks in our Denver office that manage the, the twenty-eight systems through the subscriptions, as to folks who wanna go in, and, and if you wanna get out of it, you can get out of it. I mean, there's gonna be some sort of energy contract associated with that subscription, but it's meant to be very fluid. And, and, and again, that, the onerous of keeping it at a hundred percent is on microgrid, you know, but common sense indicates that if we go and build this thing, and we're selling energy at two cent a kilowatt hour, that we won't have a problem getting subscriptions.
I guess this is, I know you handed us a sheet with fifty-five thousand dollars worth of expenses, and we're supposed to pay forty of it. I didn't, I never seen, like you just mentioned, somebody in Colorado, I never seen any paperwork on that, I never seen any, any agreement saying, you're, you keep saying three percent, now you're down to two percent, almost. I haven't seen anything on paper on that. I mean, it's nice to say, oh, it could be three, it might even be two, but where is it on paper saying, "It's gonna be two percent, and, and you can buy it at your house," but like you say, you could sell it downtown Chicago, and I'm going, well, you probably get, you know, a better price downtown Chicago than you would here, so you may sell it all down. You know, I'd like to see something on paper, on some kind of, like, who the company is in Colorado, and, and when they started, how much they're at, if they're at two percent, fine. For me to throw out forty grand, and just saying, "It could be, it possibly should be, but it might be," is not good enough for me, you know, I'd, I'd like to see what some of my other trustees...
Well, I mean, we, we are ready to commit to a price. If we can get this piece of property to a condition where it's developable, we, right now have pro-farmers ready, with our financiers, to offer, you know, a, a two-point-two-five cent kilowatt hour rate to community solar subscribers. Now, how do we make that exclusive to the village of Montgomery? I agree with you, you know, that is something that we need to do, you know, as microgrid, you know, and also show you guys who we really are, you're exactly right.
I think Trustee Lee's point is, that before this board, and I can't speak for everybody, spends forty-three thousand five hundred dollars out of a TIF district, that was a little controversial for us to put in place to begin with. We probably need to see a little bit more formalized business plan and presentation on exactly how this works, the nuts and bolts of this. This is a pretty roll-up-your-sleeves-and-get-into-the-dirties board, to understand exactly what you're talking about, because this is a lot of, a lot of sales talk, you know, and I'm a salesman, so it's a lot of that. We need to see some, some business plans, some experience, some knowledge from another community, some testimonials, maybe, some kind of a formalized presentation before I consider forty-three thousand five hundred dollars. I need something more concrete to make that decision on, is that, am I...
We're, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to get more development in this TIF, and we're trying to increase the TIF funds available for development there, and I can tell you, I'll, I'll be direct with you, I'm not gonna spend forty-three thousand dollars on, on solar, because you're, you're talking about grubbing out a location. I'm in landscape construction, I know how, how trees and shrubs work, I know that they take in carbon dioxide, they, they release oxygen and all of this, and I, I can't spend forty-three thousand dollars of, of TIF funds that are, like you said, they're very valuable, and we're trying to get more manufacturing and industrial in that area, and I've gotta save those TIF funds for that. So, even with a more in-depth business plan, that is probably off the table? For me, probably.
Not for me. I mean, I'm, I like the reuse of the brown field, I, I think it's a great use of the kind of unusable property, with something that's beneficial, but again, I think it's a lot of pie in the sky at the moment, we need some more details, some more facts.
And, 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 and with all due respect, I can, I can give you those, those plans, I mean, I was a energy consultant for a long time. But before I go into that detail, I, I, I guess I'm doing like a little listening session here, to see if I come back to you guys with a full-blown business plan presentation, on and on and on, about all the details related to this, you know, is, is the, is the village going to, to, to at least meet me, you know, like I said, I don't care who clears the trees, or whatever, you know, and the forty-three whatever, it could be less, who knows? I just know that I can't bring that property as it is right now, and get the project even started.
Well, I, I think what we're saying is, we're not gonna throw forty-three thousand away, you could put us with the plan of a Plano and a Sandwich, that we're thinking about it, but I also think that you should come back then, when you just said that about the tree, you should come back with a price on clearing the trees. If you're saying, "Well, it might be forty-three, or it might be twenty-six," well, then get a price, exactly, and that's what you need, and, and also, like I say, what's been done in Colorado, or whatever, but, and I'm just one speaking, but Stan, you got anything?
Some questions, maybe, a little bit of a tangent, but the, the land that we have in parksite estates that can't be developed, it's open field, what's the right way to describe that? We're, through the flood act, we had to withdraw housing, and we created an extremely large...
I still don't know which area you're talking about.
Parksite.
Parksite.
That can't be developed, but I'm not, I'm wondering if this would be a legitimate use for that property, which is already open and exposed.
Well, it's possible to do it within the floodplain, but not within the floodway. Anything within the floodplain, as Brian understands for this particular site, would have to be, it'd have to be compensation or mitigation of a, a small area, let's say there's posts, you know, that would take up a small area, the combination of those small post areas would generate, you know, X number of square feet. That would have to be compensated for in terms of stormwater management in another location. So, it's possible, Pete, I mean...
I think one thing, though, at Parkview, there were certain covenants that were put on the properties that we bought, that limited what could be done in the future, and we'd have to look up those covenants to determine whether it would be feasible or not. It may have said it has to remain as open space, I'm not sure, so we'll, we can check that, and let you know, but I, as I stand here, I can't tell you that answer.
I was thinking that would reduce your overhead by a significant amount. The other question I have is, would this kind of activity qualify for the revolving loan fund, as opposed to TIF money?
Sure, it could.
We can bring up when he brings the rest of the information back.
Is that something, if you're talking revolving loan fund, is that something where...
Is that something, if you're talking revolving loan fund, is that something where we are reimbursed with either dollars or savings, energy savings potentially?
That's what I was going to say, for the amount he's talking about, it would be a, wouldn't be a forgivable loan, so he would have to pay that back, which I don't think he's looking to do.
That, that I would consider.
Yeah, whatever options are out there, it's, it's on me to try to get it through in order to get it financed. You know, as it is for these community solar systems, even, you know, like I said, on a square piece of farmland, typically it's anywhere from, I would say, close to $20,000 in advance before we even know if we have a project, and of due diligence and engineering necessary to get that concept through the current system that's about to come out. And right now, everybody is out there doing all these necessary pre-development activities in anticipation of this program coming out. So, you know, it's kind of like, you know, how, how do we, how do we get to this point knowing that, you know, there's a bunch of other developers that are across the state getting these systems in place, and there's limited funding from the state for community solar? So, you know, I think, you know, there is a cost-benefit analysis in there, you know, and it is, you know, some of it, some of it is, you know, related to cheaper energy, and other parts to it are just betterment of the community.
Like you said, I hope that we don't give you money to clear the trees, and then you say they used it all up throughout the state somewhere else, and then, if you know what I mean. So, you can put all this in your thing. Pete, what do you think?
I don't, I'm not thinking about it.
Okay.
But, what do you, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Are you looking for more information?
Yeah, just like Marisack brought it up, and Youngerman, we need more information, and it needs something down in writing, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm expecting him to come back with, and Teresa, same with you?
I would agree, I'd like more information on it.
So, I think the information's right, Mr. Youngerman could even change if you get the right information to us, so.
Okay.
We're going to leave it like that, and have you get some information to us, okay?
Thank you very much.
Sure. You have unfinished business? Teresa, you got anything?
When's our next meeting?
I have an item.
Let ladies first.
So, on Saturday, April 7th, Rotary is coordinating with residents of Lakewood Creek to participate in the community cleanup that is organized by the Fox Valley Park District. So, Mira Johnson from the club is coordinating on Facebook with the HOA group in Lakewood, and that's also Mayor on the Move, so just so everyone's aware, but there's, it's cleanup day for Fox Valley Park District, so there'll be something going on in Lakewood that morning. That's all I got.
The Fun Fair will be at the Lakewood Creek School that day. I saw it when the Mayor on the Move popped up, I thought, oh, really?
Yeah.
Do we have an answer from ComEd on the Bryant Lane drainage improvements?
We don't have an approval from them. They've received the permits, and we're supposed to hear back from engineering, we haven't heard from them.
Have we put this out to bid yet?
We haven't put it out to bid yet.
Once we put it out to bid, what do you anticipate, two weeks for the bid process?
Two weeks for the bidding process, and then we generally have a few days prior to the board meeting, so we can prepare the bid item or the agenda item.
Do you think this is something that we could get approval from ComEd, bid, and on the agenda for a meeting here in a month?
I think it's feasible. As I said before, one thing we can do is hold the bids for 60 days as an option. I'd like to get at least a first opinion from ComEd as to what they think their realistic turnaround time is for us, so I think it's feasible to do it, to get bids in here in May for award, and that's what we'll work towards.
If we get bids in here in May, when are we looking at doing the work?
We could start within 10 days, you know, it's just a matter of them filing insurance and bonds, so it can start quite quickly, if we get, you know, if we have the permanent hand from ComEd.
It seems like after that last bid, we had 12 people come after there, so it looks like the companies are ready to go after stuff, so.
I'm tired of talking about this, though, we've been talking about this since October of last year. We sat on it, we didn't do anything, and now the time that, where we could have been doing our, our engineering and getting our ducks in line are, is gone. Spring is here, it's going to start raining, those people are going to have water in their basements. That's all I have.
Any unfinished business?
I would just like to, welcome back, Deputy Chief Sanders, freshly back from the FBI Academy, so, thank you. And then also, the Easter egg hunt this weekend, although it was a little dicey with the weather and no drone flying because of potential snow, Community Christian Church did a great job, they really did, of adapting and morphing and getting everything squared away here in Village Hall. It was a little tight, a little, little cozy out in the hallway there, but they did a great job with everybody, with the kids, the kids had a great time, the Easter Bunny was here, it was just, it was a nice event, so thank you to everybody and to Community Christian for putting that together for the village.
At our last meeting, Fox Valley Park District was here, I think, expecting to participate in the discussion about the bike and walking path, and I wondered if we have a timeline of sorts on when that construction might be coming.
I don't have a schedule right at this minute, we're trying to construct this construction year, we also need a Commonwealth Edison permit from them as well to cross that easement, so that's also been submitted, and we're processing them together, you know, at the same time, but we're putting emphasis on the storm sewer, obviously.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I'm not sure they, they came for that reason, they stopped in and I talked to them, and they were just driving by, and the two of them, they just said it was nice to come to a meeting that lasted until after midnight, when theirs lasted 10 minutes, so. Anything else? Okay. Future meetings, Plant Commission meeting Thursday, April 5th, 7 o'clock, Village Board meeting Monday, April 9th, 7 o'clock, Beautification Committee meeting Wednesday, April 11th, 6 o'clock, Historic Monday, April 16th, 6:30, and Community of the Home meeting Tuesday, April 17th at 7 o'clock, and our last board meeting of April is Monday, April 23rd at 7 o'clock. No executive session, take a motion to adjourn.
Should move.
Take the roll.
Trustee Heitz. Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Okay.
Trustee Marisack.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And Trustee Spurling.